Yeah, that's over there.
Benny David.
Here.
Roger Mahew.
Yeah.
Charles Walty.
Did you care?
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Greg Scott.
Yeah.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I would like to add, uh, talk about meeting structure. Our meetings structures. Like to talk about department reports, reporting from departments. Uh, cyber insurance, we did not pass it last, last week. Correct?
They saw a resolution.
We did.
No, we didn't.
We passed it.
All right, very good though.
So item G meetings, uh, rules and procedures, H department reports. Is that okay, Commissioner Scott?
Uh, then, uh, full resource officer contracts. I think we should get out ahead of the game on this for, before the end of the summer. We're gonna have to make changes.
Anything else?
Um, in the O R B, O R B committee, we can get an update on that.
Anything else, Commissioners? Okay, uh, item three, public comment, any public comment in the room?
Yes. Yes.
Any public comment? Did you have any public comments, sir?
No.
Any public comment on the phone?
What do you want me to say? I'm happy.
Item four appointments, item four A Ryan Reader, planning and zoning administrator, text amendment zero one to three, come on up, Mr. Peter. Yes, sir. Or yes, ma'am.
We can deal with stuff that was been on those.
The what?
The G O cash.
Um, no.
Okay, okay.
Any other floor?
Morning, uh, Planning Commission has a couple of proposed text amendments for you. Deal with the long one first, signage one is. Um, the signage one, we have a few items in our current ordinance that were, um, basically are unconstitutional. Point fifteen, the U S Supreme Court had a ruling in the, in the case of Reed versus Gilbert, which that's Gilbert, Arizona. And, uh, basically what they did was they struck down kind of, um, content-based regulations for signage. And basically what that means is if we need to read the sign to be able to determine how big it is, then that's a problem. So for instance, in our current ordinance, we have, um, political signs and real estate signs are listed. Different sign options are different sizes for those, um, we can't do that anymore. So we have to look at signs, um, and as far as we regulate signs, we can regulate the size, the placement and, um, the districts where they're at, however, we cannot put them based on a specific use. For instance, we can't say signage for Walmarts or big box stores or this, um, we can't say real estate signs can be this, it's. And if you look through that ordinance, we've added quite a few definitions that weren't there to kind of cover things that we did not have in the current ordinance. Um, cleaned up some of that language, um, listed out our prohibited signs, our exempted signs. And then the Jack actual general sign regulations are more on the material in construction, the area on the sign. Height and elimination. And then we break those signs down by types, so. Wall signs, canopy lining signs, projecting signs, marquee signs, freestanding signs, freestanding highway signs, and unchangeable copy signs. We also have language in there for temporary signs, which was part of the issue with that particular case. And then not many point signs, so. We did increase, we did add a little, a couple, um, prior to this ordinance, it was never really written for big box stores when Meyer came to town. Was some changes we made for those types of stores, because they are much larger than, um, than other locations. So we did add freestanding highway signs in there for them. Wall signage was changed a little bit to, um, the ten percent of, uh, ten percent of the, the face of the building that they're on. So for a large, for a large building like Meyer, so to speak, um, that was a significant change for them. Makes it easier to, they can have bigger signs, so it makes it easier when you're pulling in the parking lot, determining which side you want to go on, I mean, things like that. So that's basically the gist behind the signage portion of it.
Question. What does it affect the political signs?
Uh, political signs have been pulled out, political signs are more of a freedom of speech thing, and that's kind of the base of this whole, that whole court case was the freedom of speech side of it, so.
Meaning like election time?
Election time is, we have, currently have no language in here specifically for political signs, so they would fall under a temporary sign category.
Okay.
And, and to be honest with you, um, my training through the years is you stay away from the political signs as much as you can. Obviously, if they're, if they are creating a safety hazard.
Right.
And that's the biggest reason, part of the reason for the sign change is, um, the, the actual language that was used, others, they need to be. Um, our regulations must serve a compelling governmental interest and have to be narrowly tailored and at least restrictive to serve that purpose, so. Like I said, it's not specifically stated in there, but temporary signs are, and, and really from a signage standpoint, our governmental interest is safety, so unless it's creating a major hazard, then probably something we're, we're not gonna touch with. But yeah, thirty-two square feet is the maximum for, for, um, temporary signs, um, unless you have a larger parcel, then we do allow larger signs for that. The height of that sign can be more than six feet from finish grade, so, very simple, very simple when it comes to temporary sign.
From finish grade?
From finish grade, from the ground.
Okay.
So yeah, we don't want eight foot, oh, temporary signs out there, so six foot tall is usually, um, about the max, when it's the height from the ground, so you're gonna blocking, blocking too much.
Any other questions for Ryan? You need a resolution from us, correct? This got approved through the zoning committee.
Correct, correct, everything's been through Planning Commission, both of them have been passed, uh, the campment you have, um.
It also went to our legal team, correct?
It also went to our legal, last, actually, last year, our legal team reviewed both of them, um, the only comments they had were on the sign ordinance and those, those have been taken out. Probably seeing your copy, I actually left some of the, the changes out of them, or I left the changes in there that are kind of, that are stricken. Just so you can kind of see what was there and what was changed. So for instance, on the signs, anything in there that said as determined by the Oldham County zoning administrator was removed. We wanna have solid, solid regulations, we don't want this to be my opinion or somebody's opinion, because that could change from person to person. But those have been taken out of it. Which we only, I think we had three occasions where that was in there and that was under prohibited signs.
Any other questions? You need both of these on for resolution separately next week?
Probably should, just for tracking or indexing for you. What can do are A and B or one and two?
One and two.
One and two. The camping was also changed as well to some slight adjustments made in there, more for enforcement reasons and trying to get a, start to get a handle on, on some of this, so it's getting a little bit out of control.
Mr. Peter. Oh, mad.
Commissioner. Commissioner Simmons.
Um, so there, or by fifth wheels on a piece of property, that will no longer be allowed, is that correct?
Um, yeah, the limit on there, I believe, is three.
That's what I read here.
Yeah, and those timeframes were defined as well to, um.
So you switched to fourteen days?
That's been in there all along, the fourteen days with, if you're not connected to well-inseptic, has been in there fourteen days.
Oh, that's if you're now connected, and they are connected to well-inseptic, so. Is it still three, if you're, what happens if you are connected to well-inseptic?
I believe it's because that's, that timeframe's been changed instead of a number of days and a certain number of period, that's been defined as April first through November thirtieth. I believe it only allows one. One, it's one. So one connected on a parcel, if it's connected well-inseptic, can be there for.
Only one?
Only one, if it's connected.
But they can't live in.
Right, these are, these are temporary uses, so none of them are permanent.
This will help our overall.
Right, I understand that, but there, um, west town, some property, there's like five of them that go out there and they're hooked up, I think they're all hooked up to the same one, I think.
They very well may be. There are a lot out there.
Yes, there are a lot up there. Thank you so much.
Do you have any questions? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. You got forty acres, you can have one hooked up. Permanent, permanently for that April, technically for that April first through the November thirtieth, yeah. Those are, those are more being set up as, they're more of like a seasonal residence, so to speak, it's not a permanent dwelling, but it's a seasonal, so, um, on a forty acre parcel, having one or two, probably three or four would not bother somebody, I mean, we're trying to tailor this for, we've gotta start with the small parcels and kind of work our way.
I, I just parked mine there and all summer and I might go there six times, but.
Right. There, there are, there, there will be, I pretty much deal on, on a, um, complaint-only basis, unless it's a health or safety issue. And there are gonna be a lot of people that have campers that nobody ever, ever gonna know about, so they're in the middle of forty acres, they're in the middle of eighty acres, they're, they're, um, they're far away from platted subdivisions, um. And I was just looking last night, just in, just around Lake Ogama, there are ten platted subdivisions around Lake Ogama, and the first three have six hundred and nine parcels total in them, and you're, you're looking at parcels that are no wider than, you know, sixty, seventy, seventy-five feet, so. When you have them that close together, or we're gonna put three or four in a parcel, that could be a problem.
No, I know.
That's where primarily the, the complaints are, is around the lakes, um, Lake Ogama's a big one, he's only gonna, not looking for problems, what's the problems that are being complained about?
I ju, I don't do it to bug nobody, it's, it's mine, I just, when it gets summertime, I drag it there and I'll look at, go on.
Yeah, can people take, uh, shed like a twelve by sixteen shed and make it into a residence on a lake?
No. Um, the permits that are issued for accessory structures like sheds, actually, they all say are not a habitable structure. Our minimum square footage per habitable squa, structure is four hundred square feet of living space.
Four hundred square feet?
Four hundred square feet of living space, and that, um, that basically includes everything but your hallways and your closets, so. But however, these have to be permanent structures, they have to pass building codes, um, and they do need to be on a permanent foundation, so.
And then there's one on George Lake.
There's, there's a lot of them, unfortunately, a lot of times people will pull permits for sheds and then they will not final the permit. So we may or may not know what they've done to the inside of that shed or what they're using the shed for. All sheds, regardless of size, require a zoning permit, um, if they are larger than two hundred square feet, then they also require a building permit as well. But we're aware that that is happening as well, too.
Commissioner Walty, questions?
Back to the point, permits not finalizing, isn't that something that we could follow up on?
It's something we can follow up on, yeah. I have to have a discussion with the, the building inspector. Usually if I have zoning permits that are, occasionally through the years, we will get permits that will not be complete and we'll hold on to them. They may or may not ever come back and finish them up, um, those permits, I will actually go out and look to see if anything's been done. Well, I think we're following up on more and more and more. I have had more phone calls this, this year than any year. A lot of mortgage companies and lenders are looking into the permit status of, of properties before they, they'll do a loan for somebody, so. It's not uncommon, or need to get a phone call from somebody, they will ask to verify if everything has been finalized, and the property permits have been finalized. Occasionally they are not, so the, the property owner will have to go back and do that. There've been a couple of occasions where there were no permits pulled at all, and it's been ten or fifteen years, that individual has to come in and pull a building permit and go through the inspection process the same, so. We had one with a pretty good-sized pole barn, um, husband had passed away and, and, uh, she was selling the property and did not pull a permit fifteen years ago for the pole barn. The lender for the buyer would not consider the pole barn unless it was permitted and finalized, so. Fortunately for the property owner, she did come in and pull a permit and it did pass today's codes and she was able to do that, but it's happening more and more and more. Cracking down on some of those things, um, road maintenance agreements for some of these planted subdivisions, some lenders are wanting that, um, ensure that they can get to the property itself, so. But it's something what we can follow up on. Just hope they have a discussion and figure out when the best time to do that, probably the winter months would be the best time to do that.
Any, any questions on these two text amendments, these, the signs or the, no? Uh, Commissioner Scott? You're pretty familiar with this.
No. No, I don't have any question.
So are you guys okay with, with these two both being on, uh, for resolution?
We're, we're all set.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Item B, Deputy Chris Better. Good morning.
Good.
Morning. Or B, funding request.
Yes, everybody received the email that I sent.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, yeah, I didn't know, in a nutshell, during the not rescue operation, we took the transmission out of the county four-wheeler. Uh, I got a couple quotes, I requested three, I got two back so far. Um, both of them are, one's forty, four thousand twenty, one's four thousand seventy. Um, fix it.
Yes.
So I'm still waiting for the third quote to come back, but I'm guessing it's gonna be around that same four thousand range.
What year is that? I didn't see that in here, I might.
It's a twenty fifteen. This is, and it's one of, it didn't, it was a free one that we got from the, the government, but we didn't cost anything to buy it. And we've been utilizing it for patrol and whatnot, rescue operations and starting next month, I'll be teaching ORB safety classes, so I kinda needed to, for demonstrations for the kids and.
Can they fix it in a timely manner, do you know?
Yes.
They are, okay.
Yes, um, once, if, once we can figure all this out, then, yeah, they can have it fixed within a week.
And that's the one local here, right? You said Cruisin's?
Yeah, Cousins, I put, I had Cruisin's.
I think it's Cruisin's too.
Well.
I don't know.
I did this email about lunchtime and I've seen a Cruisin's up at Sage Lake at the restaurant there, so, uh, but it's actually Cousins.
Ice cream there, that's what you get.
It is, um, so that's, yes, it's down the street here, it's local, um, that's where it's at currently and I also reached out to Spicers and then Extreme Sports dealer.
What, saying Helen?
They don't, they don't fix polycrises.
Oh, okay.
So.
Yeah, I don't, any questions, guys? I gotta have it fixed, go ahead.
Was it going out of, uh, road patrol money?
I've got a couple thoughts on, on the funding of it, um, one, there is a special fund that's been dormant for a number of years, that's labeled B. Forget the fund, something, there's about two thousand dollars sitting there not doing anything, it's labeled ORB, I think this would be a great use for it. So we could transfer that into the, the current, uh, ORB activity and, and offset some of the cost. Uh, don't know the status of the ORB budget, but if there was additional necessary, there's, uh, would be, you know, another two thousand could come from contingency.
Yeah.
Uh, and now that's assuming, you know, the pricing is, I think you were just over four thousand, I think, on your low one.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, we're, we're talking about two thousand, maybe twenty-one hundred out of contingency, then.
And they're telling me now that if it could be up to forty-five hundred, depending on when they get in there, if there's a, there's other, another part that, if it's damaged as well, um, they can't see it until they actually get the transmission out, if that's damaged, it could be another couple hundred dollars to fix that, so. Yeah, somewhere between the four thousand and forty-five hundred.
Um, we can do an up to number on the contingency.
Right, and so it's not, uh, we won't know that until they actually get in there and get it. Hopefully we will.
But that's assuming the current budget can't handle.
Current budget will only cover, be lucky to get us through till the end of the season, with wages and fuel, so, at the current. So.
No, you're very conscious of that, so I just wanna make sure.
I'm trying to be, yeah, um, yeah, I wanna make sure that we can, we keep people out there and keep the patrols going and.
Yeah, I have a, what, go ahead, Commissioner Smith, um, you said you put it on for patrol. Uh, why, why can't the millage be used for that if you're using this for patrolling, or is it just for cars on the road?
It's only for the cars, it's not for the ORB, the ORB is a state, a grant, D N R funded program.
Don't we need more money?
I know, I keep telling them that, but they won't give it.
We gave us eleven thousand this year.
They give us, they did give us, yeah, we normally get ten this year, they actually did give us eleven.
So I just figured it would cover it since it's.
No.
There's a warranty on this transmission, right?
There is, there's your warranty on it.
On there, go ahead, Commissioner Walty.
Seems awful expensive to me.
I know, especially when a new one is nine thousand.
Did Extreme get back to you, I've, I've been close friends with the owners at Extreme, did they get back with you?
Yep, they're.
And did you get a quote for them?
Yep.
What were they at?
They were, they were the hot, next highest, forty seventy.
So Spicer's even higher than that?
Spicer's hasn't even gotten back with yet. Well. Um, but to replace the, the identical with the twenty-three model is a little over nine thousand right now. We don't need a new one, um, the one we have runs great, rides great, it's up in the long, other than the transmission. We don't have a whole lot of, I mean, we don't have a lot of money into it, we don't have any money into it, it's free, um. And it does get utilized, it's not just something that sits, so. Kind of a necessity, and like I said, it worked great there last weekend, I had to go rescue that guy that was we would have, it would took a while, guys to carry this gentleman out, we would have to do it manually. We're, we're good, so just threw him in the back and away we went, so.
Mr. Scott?
The only off-road vehicle you got?
Only four-wheeler.
What's the other off-road vehicle we have?
Side-by-side.
All right, and which model is that?
The Wolverine.
It's the Wolverine?
Yeah.
Cause they bought that and say no, I remember.
Yes, we had the Wolverine, but that would have never made it back into where I was at with it.
Well.
But still.
There's places, even a four-wheeler's not gonna get.
Oh, absolutely.
There's places a mountain goat's not gonna get, okay?
Yeah.
You're not gonna ever find any, anything that finds you everything that you need it for.
No.
Not even my dirt bike will get into every place there is, I can tell you that.
That is very true.
I've been there.
Yeah.
A mule will get almost anywhere. The mule.
Where are you headed with this, Commissioner Scott?
We're going. Well, we already have another one. We have. It's a side-by-side. All right, what are we patrol on? What are we patrolling? We're going for ORB patrol, this is not ORB rescue.
Well, we also.
We don't go out only because of rescues, we going out patrolling.
Cause we also have the less than fifty-inch trails we have to patrol as well.
Well. You don't have to, okay? Don't, don't, don't get this so far that you have to do this, you know? If we're out there patrolling the ones we can, then that's pretty good. You know, I mean it. It's good to patrol everything it can, but like I say, everything it can. Now, the second half of this is you want more money for the marine.
Yeah.
So if you had to pick a priority out, which would it be, marine or would it be ORB?
We're headed there next, so.
Well, yeah.
To talk about that, so hang on.
I'm talking about it together.
Well, we're, we're, we're still on one right now, we'll go into two and then you can ask your question.
My question is, what, if we were to give some money out of, or one, what would be the priority?
Do you have any questions related to the transmission on the four-wheeler?
It's broke. No, no, I don't have a question about the transmission, I got a trans, I got a question about what we're.
So how about if we hear his?
Spend more money on it.
How about if we hear your statement on the marine funding request, so we can hear what you have to offer first? I don't think that's a fair question till you give your, your information.
The last couple of years, you guys have given five thousand to the marine patrol.
Go ahead.
To subsidize patrols and make sure that we're out there on the, the general lakes, we have nineteen lakes that we work on.
And last year, we gave it to you without asking for it.
Yep.
Cause I made a motion.
You did, and I appreciate that, that's why I haven't asked.
I'm, I'm kinda looking at two thousand from that pot.
I don't think you, Commissioner Scott, I don't think you, I don't think you're completed, correct? You, you, maybe five thousand dollars, you're asking for what exactly?
Well, last, like I said, I'm asking for five, another five thousand, like we have.
For this year?
For this year's marine fund.
Hey, Tim, do you have anything to add to that?
Just, we'll have to find the source for it, we've got literally, well, I was gonna say one, but there are two, uh, obviously we have, uh, funding in contingency that could handle that, you could fund it with ARPA if you wanted to, there is no, uh, uh, residual fund balance in a, a marine fund anywhere that I'm aware of anyway, so we don't have that option, but those are your two sources, right?
You, so do you feel five thousand has not covered what you're looking for? I, I guess I'm.
We get sixty-seven hundred from the state.
Correct, okay.
For the, from the D N R for the marine fund.
Okay.
Um, and this year, actually, last couple of years, we've done the, the state funds, which was seventy-five, twenty-five. Uh, this year we get federal fund, we got the federal fund, so that's a hundred percent. So the county and that could pick up that twenty-five percent, cause all, like I said, the state's gonna pay a hundred percent of that sixty-seven hundred. So up to sixty-seven. Up to sixty-seven, so then you got another, you know, extra five thousand to get us through.
So you're asking from, you're asking five thousand from us, I just wanna make sure we're clear.
Five thousand for the extra marine, extra marine patrol, to keep the current patrols that we have, where we've been maintaining the last couple of years. Right around that eleven thousand dollar range, if we can get all done.
To cover this summer that you're currently active in, or for next summer?
The summer.
So what do you have currently to?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven hundred dollars, so what did you spend last year? I thought we already gave you five thousand, that was part of our, in our budget, correct?
That was last.
I'll have to look at the budget, are you leaving out the Lake Ogama revenue?
Yes, leaving that out.
Because?
It's not part of the marine.
It is, but it was like a contract, separate contract, so, on Lake Ogama, so. Yeah, our, our total overall is over about fourteen thousand with the Lake Ogama contract and what the state gives us and what you guys have given us.
Like, give them five thousand, wasn't that in our budget?
I'll have to look it up right now.
Um, so Lake Ogama gives you, is there any other lakes that, that contribute to this fund?
Just Lake Ogama, cause we have a contract, it's a private lake.
And you guys patrol how many lakes?
Nineteen.
How many?
Nineteen.
I'm sorry, I'm hard of hearing today.
Okay.
What need to.
What is their contribution? Huh, what is their contribution?
Oh, yeah. It's roughly thirty-five.
Tim's got it right there.
Yeah, you've got, um, ten thousand seven, and that's all your grants and, and everything you mentioned, and, uh, charge for services, what it's called, thirty-five hundred on that contract.
Yeah.
So total of fourteen two.
Didn't we contribute five thousand already to that?
No, uh, I don't see any, well.
What's the budget? What did you say the budget?
Budget, uh, for expenditures is fourteen, one sixty-three. Revenue you've got, uh, in at fourteen two, so you've got, you know, obviously you're balanced.
I mean, so, you got fourteen something, so we got thirty-five hundred from the contract.
Mm-hmm.
That leaves eleven something.
Ten seven.
Well, it's already budgeted, though. Sixty-seven hundred is gonna come back from.
Five come from us?
So we've already budgeted.
I can't.
Put that in then.
Yeah, so it was already in there, from what you're reading me right now.
Um, what I'm, is a line that says marine safety grant and seven, so what we must have done is combined everything, every commitment that needed to be made, uh, to match that grant into that one line.
Okay.
Back when the budget was built, we've already put it in there because of the.
The five thousand, correct?
Commissioner Newbacker was part of that, I think, even you, it was four thousand, four thousand. But that makes sense, I think if we go back and look at meeting minutes, we'll see where that forty thousand was added, whatever.
You presented it to us.
Yeah.
Seems fairly recent, I guess I.
But we do that from the budget numbers, sixty-seven hundred is gonna come back from the federal, and then the differences, the additional money that, so the four thousand's off the table, so we would say the ORB is more important.
Good answer. Oh, wait a minute, I don't know that you can answer at that time, okay, because we weren't talking about it combined.
Quite honestly, it wouldn't have mattered, the ORB is still a life-saving tool.
Yes, it is, but if.
That's a priority to me.
Okay, wait a minute, so if they didn't give us an ORB grant at all.
Yep.
Okay? Then, and there's nobody out there saying, Ogama County, you have to have ORB patrol. No, there is no, there's no agency out there, the state doesn't require us to, the federal government doesn't require us to. I mean, if, if we're not required, you know, it's great to do it. I mean, if, if we're not required, you know, it's great to do it. It's great to help as much as you can. As much as you can means as much funding as you can.
Yep.
If there isn't funding, you can't do it.
But our constituents and several of the townships are.
Constituents, I deal with.
Go ahead. It's his turn to talk.
Constituents every day, but they're gonna complain in different townships about what's going on in the ORB ordinance enforcement. So if we didn't have a grant, we would still have to come up with some way to answer to the constituents about what they're gonna do about these ORBs that are ripping up the roadway that are areas they're not supposed to be, are we not? Is that not the service that we provide?
The roads and you've got cars that are on the roads.
Back in the trails.
How many, okay, guys, we're getting off track here. How many, how many, how many hours? Um, do you do ORB? Cause I've had people ask me this question. How many hours are ORB, uh, patrolling? Because I don't, yes, let's say weekly.
Uh, at least twelve.
Okay, how about marine?
Uh, at least eight, if not more.
Cause they brought this.
Sixteen.
Per week. Okay, I've had at these meetings, the town meetings, people have asked, so. Tim, did you have something? It looked like you were looking something up.
Yeah, I'm. One item ahead of you, so.
Thank you.
Taking my notes.
Uh, so do we have the funding to provide support for this, uh, this transmission of a lot of money?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, four thousand. Do we have funding for this?
I would recommend that we pull the two thousand from that ORB fund and then we stay up to three thousand from contingency and that should cover, cover any other anomaly they find.
Yep.
And if you can find any other quotes that may be a little bit cheaper with a warranty, that'd be greatly appreciated as well.
Oh, absolutely.
I think we can put that on for next week, please. Thanks. Anything else? Go ahead, Commissioner. I'm sorry.
So another thing that I keep in mind, I'm really not following you too, too much on your stance here. So our trail system in Ogama County brings a lot of revenue and people to our county right now. Just, just listen. And we have certain trails that are fifty inches or narrower. Our side-by-side's not gonna reach that. So we have people coming to our county, spending money at our businesses, enjoying our area. Somebody gets injured up on a trail that's under fifty inches, a quad's gonna be able to save their life, a side-by-side isn't. So you gotta keep that in mind. It's, it's a very important piece of machinery to have.
Does any of the fire departments have four-wheelers? Lupton or Bro City have a four-wheeler?
They do this. It's their own personal use. I don't know. I don't believe they actually have. The fire department actually has.
Does Mills?
Foster.
Does Mills?
Mills does not.
I don't know.
Sure, Ogama does have many.
Yeah, I don't.
Never one I'm actually familiar with.
Was that it?
I don't know if Kadar maybe might have something. I don't know.
Was that it, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Thanks.
DNR.
Thanks, guys. This special fiscal year twenty-twenty-four fee schedule.
I've got a list of, uh, you've got the worksheet for all the fees that are, uh, subject to your approval and then some statutory ones in there as well. Departments were asked to take a look at this and make any recommended changes they have for the next fiscal year. Uh, received, uh, changes on four. Uh, one of them was on the track index at the register of deeds. They're uh, seeking an increase from fifty dollars to sixty dollars and that would then mean that the track search fee per minute would have to be raised from eighty-four cents to a dollar. So those are sort of in tandem. Uh, and then at the very bottom, there are two new, uh, rates. The first one would be for housing of out-of-county inmates at, uh, jail at thirty-three dollars. This is based on conversation that we've had uh, over the last couple of months on that. So obviously, subject to your, uh, uh, approval, uh, to what number that should be. And then finally, to actually put the return check fee in the list as well at twenty-five dollars. Those are the only changes. Otherwise, departments haven't recommended to change any of the other fees.
Was there, uh, cost for return checks previous?
There was a policy from years ago that was adopted years, probably ten years ago or more. But when, uh, Tim reached out to say, review this, I thought maybe it should be listed there, even though it's in a policy, maybe it should be listed in the fee schedule.
Was there a price?
A dollar.
Previously there was as well, so there's no real changes. It's just listed.
Just listing it in your schedule.
We just increased a lot of these. Was this last year?
Last year, there were quite a few changes.
There was. I don't have a problem with that. Any questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Wiltie? Commissioner Scott?
Are we, are we reviewing these with each of the departments listed?
Each of the departments receive the actual worksheet that you see with the instruction to review those fees and recommend changes, so they could be at the table here today. Uh, and also the, the replies we've received in the form that we just listed.
Brenda? Brenda?
Commissioner Simmons?
I have been able to make the park. And I have not been able to make the parks meeting in the last couple of months. Did you guys review the fee schedule?
Uh, I don't believe we did. Are we on here?
Yeah, county RV park.
Oh, I see.
We can add to it anytime.
You can. It's the idea right now. So departments can start building budgets for twenty-four.
Right.
You know what the fees are. They can estimate revenues from that.
Right. Okay.
You know, the last time those were increased, Commissioner Scott, the rustic and modern and dump fees?
No, I don't. Right off of that, I don't know, but I've been adamant as a member of the parks committee that we don't undercut undercut the other campgrounds in the, in the county. I don't think it's fair for the county to not have to pay property taxes and other things and have an unfair advantage over other businesses and then cut cutting lower fees. We should be at, at their fee or above.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Are you talking also about state campgrounds?
Uh, well, I.
Right for word?
I have no, nothing. Uh, we oughta, we oughta, we oughta check and see what they, what they charge.
That's more than twenty-five.
Well, it probably is, but we don't, we can't dictate any prices inside their campground.
No, and I understand, but when you talked about competition, were you talking about also state campgrounds like that?
Well, uh, state campground is competition, yes.
Okay.
You know, I just, I just don't believe that we should. I think it's unfair advantage that the county owns property or, and then and then undercuts business. If, if you own a campground and you're trying to make it at forty dollars and we come at thirty dollars because I don't, we don't have the, the cost that you do, I don't think that's fair.
So you guys need to take this back to your board, to your board.
Yeah, it's like Tim says, we'll, uh, we can revisit this anytime.
Good. Any other questions on the fee schedule? Commissioner? Okay, we'll have that on for resolution. Thanks. Jail scanner update, item B. Any updates?
Uh, other than, you know, the, the email I sent to you is still valid. Uh, it's, uh, RFP is still alive. It will, um, I believe the deadline is a week from, well, two weeks from last Tuesday, so it will be on your next committee, the whole agenda. So any responses we receive, you'll have them and can move forward.
Good. Question?
Anything yet?
We have received one. Have no idea what it is, cause we don't open them until the deadline, but, right? So at least we got one in the, you know, in the harbor.
Any other questions? Item C, Hyings Property?
This is a continuation of a conversation that maybe you, um, addressed at the last meeting, but this was, Commissioner Wiltie had suggested setting up a a committee or he would lead a group to investigate, uh, uh, I, I don't know what's the sale or the upkeep or exactly what, but, um, it was asked that that be put on the agenda and that we have the conversation.
Um, I was at the zoning meeting with Ryan and, uh, Mister, is it Mister Lapum is on the parks? Uh.
Who?
Lapum?
Lapum, yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
God.
He's on the parks, uh, uh, committee, he said.
Parks and Rec, yeah.
Yeah, and, and he, he had said he'd talked to you briefly about it, but he, he was, I believe he's gonna bring it up, your guys' meeting this upcoming, whenever your next, uh, Parks and Rec meeting is, as far as to discuss the Hyings again as well.
I was, I was going to mention that maybe it'd be good if Charlie just attended our parks meeting and talked with the other members.
He thought it'd be, and I'm gonna state what he said, um, uh, he didn't think it'd be a problem to add that. Um, he said it's been kinda off the table discussed, but never up to the table discussed as a whole. Um, so.
Brought it right to, it should be in the minutes.
I, I, I don't know, but, but it was, he brought it to my attention at the zoning. Um, so I.
That's been well over a year ago because that point was still brought to us.
At the zoning meeting, so he's gonna bring it back to you guys. But go ahead. I'm sorry, Commissioner Wiltie, go ahead.
Oh, I mean, I would, yeah, I would enjoy to be at that meeting if I could, for sure. I think that's great. Um, again, at the end of the day, uh, I really feel that we have a a strong group of people over in Mills Township, um, that would get involved with this. I would, uh, be honored to. And, uh, I really think we could come up with a very good maintenance program, uh, that would split up duties amongst everyone. Um, and I really don't think it'd be that difficult to do. I'm more than willing to do that. I know there's people waiting. Uh, for example, the Boy Scouts and owner of Troll's Landing, uh, Mills Township's already made the commitment to continue to mow the lawn and we have the guy that cuts the wood, uh, and he donates that. He owns a sawmill. Uh, Dave, uh, supervisor there at Mills Township, Dave Ryan, is working on that. So, I mean, we have a lot of things in place. It's just a matter getting a direction and, and again, if the parks are right, we wanna take that on and we can still get some more people involved. Um, I'd be more than willing to help with whatever I can.
Scott seemed to think it was definitely a possibility, but that, that'll be up to you guys to discuss. When's your meeting at the Parks and Rec?
Second Wednesday, so two more weeks.
Here.
Let's just go to it. Here at nine o'clock.
Two or three.
I'll step out of the room. I don't care.
It's, um.
It's not, uh.
So you'll be fine.
It's just informational, really.
So you guys will report back to us? I think if, if, if that would be the best route to go through the Parks and Rec.
And there could be a subcommittee from the Parks and Rec. Whereas just certain people take care of that or something like that.
That's fourteen?
Yes.
At what time?
You hear all that, Commissioner Simmons?
I don't know.
Do you have questions? Comments? Okay, more to come on that. Uh, item D, Field of Dreams Property?
What, um, we need to do there, I provided a list several minutes ago, uh, but there's a primarily, um, very detailed survey that the attorney recommended that we do. Uh, I'll commit to getting quotes for that to bring them back to the next committee, the whole meeting. The rest of the things we need to do uh, really kind of depend on the survey. So we need to file, um, you know, deeds with the register of deeds. We need to have an agreement with the township about the uh, lease that currently is there and, and avoiding that. And, uh, there was all the, uh, quick claim deed. All of that will kind of generate after we see what the survey is and we can include all the, you know, different components of that into the, uh, sale. Assuming that's the direction we wanna go, but that's, that's the part we're waiting on. And so we will commit to at least getting those quotes around and getting that moving so that you can move forward.
Who, who's gonna pay for the survey?
Well, let's get the quotes and then let's talk about it. If it's, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars, I think we, it would be very, uh, you know, appropriate to ask the, the township to participate in that. If it's just a few hundred, you know, maybe we're just simply doing it. But let's get the quotes and then we can discuss it from there.
You're talking about a regular survey, not?
No, this is, um, actually, I forget what the term of art was, but it was a very detailed survey that will not only show the property boundaries, but any improvements. So any buildings that are there, any fences, anything that, uh, was, you know, an asset of some kind that's permanently affixed to the property that will be included in that survey. And that way, when they go to write the, uh, when the attorney goes to write the agreement with the township, all of that's included. So there's never a question as to what went with the sale. And he said it may be overkill, but then twenty years from now, when people are looking back at this, it's gonna be very handy to see it.
I just had a survey done, but they put about ten stakes in the ground and it cost me twelve hundred bucks.
Yeah, there's.
Okay.
I have a question.
Commissioner Wiltie?
So West Branch Township's made it very clear and adamant they wanna buy this property?
They have, and I've been in communication periodically with, uh, I believe it's the township clerk, uh, just keeping him updated on what is it that we need to compile and, and, and that sort of thing. So, yeah, they've, uh, I would say at least once every month, I get a request for an update.
So after the survey, then are we gonna do a market, a local real estate broker?
That's actually part of that process, uh, so that can be, you know, assessed. And I think you'll also wanna review, uh, in the material that I have, uh, how much the county has put into that property. Uh, I don't remember if this is the case on this specific one or not, but some of our properties came to us, uh, really through a purchase. So there was some money the county put out to buy the property. Don't know for sure if that's the case on this specific one, but we'll wanna review that too and, yeah, discuss whether, uh, whether or not you wanna recover those funds. Uh, right now, we're proceeding on the thought that, that, you know, the sale will be for something like a dollar, but we haven't had a real serious conversation about that yet.
I'm sorry. So the township or the DGN?
Township, yes.
And what's the group right now that maintains that property? They came here once. Someone asked me at the zoning meeting.
Ogama Record, Ogama Hills Recreation.
It's out there.
It's a nonprofit, if I remember.
Yeah. It's a dollar-per-year thing. Pretty much just like Charlie's talking about the Hyings.
Hey.
I don't even know if it's, uh, five-one or anything like that.
What timeframe are you thinking on this?
Um, your next county meeting, I expect at least have some quotes so that you can look at them and we can begin our game plan.
Perfect. Any more, any more questions to that, Commissioner Scott?
At one point, I said, maybe it'd be good if we could trade the property with, uh, the RV park and it was brought to my attention that there's a, there's a framed resolution on the wall at West Branch Township that says that in two thousand six, West Branch Township sold us the prop, sold the county and the property for the RV park. Um, Spencer brought it to my attention and he's been looking, trying to find minutes that are minutes that say that, but nothing yet.
If you look at their minutes at all.
But their resolution, it has all the seven commissioners at that point all signed off to, on it, so. But we may own it.
Wouldn't Denise know that?
If, if it ever got filed. If it ever got filed, I don't know.
Have you checked with her?
No, no.
Provided, she did a search about a year or so. Properties and we've got quite a file. We'll check on it. I, I don't remember that, but.
Here's, um.
I didn't. That was.
Oh, heck.
Was, was.
I'm listening.
That was impressive.
She's very impressive.
Um, we, there are some surveys for it already.
You're talking about the campground, right?
No.
What are you talking about now?
You didn't probably hear all.
Okay, so hold on. What are you?
I was looking for my information when you went to campground.
What do you, what do you, what do you have surveys on?
There's partial surveys on Ogama Rec already. Um, when they divided off and sold the house in front, there's the survey for that, what was divided off there. Um.
At the Field of Dreams?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so the structures, there's a pole barn and then there's a Quanza hut and then the fields and stuff.
Who did that survey?
This survey was done by Lapum. This one was done by North Star. And then there was some when they sold to um, the tractor implement. There was some parts that were off, so they had to be back and forth there too. So I don't know. I'd have to look. I gave you all my information, so my file here isn't updated.
And what you might have missed there is Commissioner Scott said that there is a frame on the West Branch Township Hall or something that says that they sold the, the campground to the county in two thousand and six?
Yeah.
I have the information. He has it in his file. Because I, when I looked all that stuff up, I gave it to. We own both of them. We have, we own both of them.
All right.
We only have a lease with the township for Ogama Rec, so we own both of them.
Okay, all right.
And the survey you're talking about will cost thousands.
Would, would what you have be beneficial?
Asking, it'll be thousands more, but.
Yeah, it'll be thousands. I have the preliminary outline of everything. There was a survey that shows going along here. The survey will not show the buildings. The only, because that's more or less like a mortgage survey, which we don't record. This one did the buildings because they kept the Quanza hut because we run it. And so they sold the house up front to somebody else to generate income so that they could do more stuff.
So Tim has some homework.
Hmm.
Okay, thanks to you.
Thank you.
Thanks for.
Yeah, if you want to trade the two properties, you own them already, so.
Item E, use of transit funds for security cameras to be moved to new construction project. Who's, who's got this? Is this you?
I didn't ask put, put on there, but I support it. I think it's fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, that we can use, um, to go towards the new construction of the pole barn and the wash bay and. And everything else.
Did I miss an email on this or?
Sorry, we, we had discussed it when Ray was here last, because he told us at that time that that fifty-five thousand dollars could be used for it. And I think Brenda, we talked about it at our last committee meeting and we all agreed that we should use it now. There, it's basically for cameras and a fence for out front. Uh, really the fence at this point is, is not really something that's needed. The cameras, you know, with this day and age, I mean, we could get a company in there and put up a few cameras that are needed. At a not very expensive price. Uh, so I think that it'd be wise to use this money right now, because it also has a, um, an end date as well.
I'm not familiar with the grant.
So you're just asking, you're not asking for money, you're just asking to transfer funds? You, did they?
I'm really not for sure, um. I never asked to get this put on there, but I mean, it's something that we should, that we should do.
Let me dig into this, Ray, and get the details on the grant and see if. But there likely is some motion you'll have to make to say, we're going to now use these funds for this purpose if. It just depends on how detailed that grant was. Yeah, if it just said generally for. Uh, transit purposes, we're, we're good. But if it was very specific and said, we're going to use it for this purpose, we may need to do some kind of an amendment.
Okay, so you let us know or put it on the resolution? I don't see it being a problem.
Talk a little more about the, since we're on the transit. Have you heard anything more? Um, last I was informed from Ray, we were still waiting for final approval from Dean. With M dot, have you heard anything more? I know you were gone a couple.
Um, nothing more, but I did get a request from Ray to provide some documentation on where we published the RFP. There were two, um, uh. Construction.
Yeah.
I, I don't even know if all of them, just, uh, associations that put this out to all their members too, and the state wants to see who they were and what they did. Uh, and that he's just waiting on me to reply. I've got the data, just didn't have the chance to shoot it over to him yet. I don't imagine that would hold it up, but yeah, who knows?
Well, I think Dean wants to make sure that we did our due diligence to get the process out there.
And I do know he's been in contact with the county attorney too, in terms of the contracts and what their requirements are. They have, uh. Uh, prevailing wage requirements and some other things that they want to make sure in the contract. I did talk to the attorney about that a couple of days ago and he says it's not a problem. Uh, it's just, uh, an add-on to the boilerplate they already have. So hopefully that's moving along too.
And Miller Construction is, is basically they're up to speed where, where we're at.
As far as I know, I haven't asked them directly, but, uh, things are moving along, so hopefully they've been kept up to date.
So you're going to get that out to Dean and M dot?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think we just need to really.
Yeah, I agree, especially. Business construction companies are these days.
Right.
Okay.
Anything else? Item F supplemental ARPA work session. One, county building energy efficient improvements.
Um, for these three, just a suggestion, and I know we haven't, um. Um, finished any new priorities or anything, but these three continue to come up in conversations though. Uh, we are a little bit at a disadvantage on the. Idea of the county building energy efficiency improvements. We're talking lights, windows, things of this nature. Uh, we don't know what we're talking about in terms of cost, scope of the project or anything like that. Uh, for a long time and I, I'll get in contact to find out if they still do it, but consumers' energy would come through and do what they call an energy audit. And they would list all that stuff out and provide some estimated cost and what it would be to do that. And so if there's no objection, I'll go ahead and reach out to consumers and whether you proceed with it or not is, is not really a question. We really need the information anyway. And if nothing else, we can set ourselves up on a capital program to replace certain things over time. Uh, so that's one item. Correctional facility gate repairs come up a few times. This is an expense that frankly, um, it should be. Part of the routine maintenance that we do. If that gate's not working, what's not working? Why isn't it working? So my intention there is to instruct our maintenance supervisor to get some quotes to fix it. I have no idea what's wrong with it. Uh, one of the shortest books that's ever written is everything I know about mechanics. It's not much. Uh, talking with Commissioner Scott the other day, it might be just something needs to be oiled and who knows? So let's find out what we're dealing with there and maybe it's something that can be part of just the routine, um, maintenance that we do, uh. Day to day. And then finally, the, uh, sheriff's office has come up several times, uh, again, along with the. Uh, idea behind the energy efficiency improvements. We don't really know what we're looking at in terms of what has to be done. We do know, I mean, while I see the facade on the outside. I have no idea what kind of costs we're looking at, but what else are we talking about? So before you even sit down to really work on what your priorities are, it'd be a good idea to know what these costs are, what the magnitude of the projects are. And then I think you can make a more educated decision about what the priorities ought to be.
I don't have a problem with them at least getting estimates, but I think we need to set up a, a. Separate meeting again, once these quotes are obtained in the next couple of weeks, uh, to discuss our, uh, separate meeting, just to discuss our. Funds. I, I find those meetings very beneficial and very productive.
You're on the. Good end of an extra Thursday this month on the twenty ninth.
Perfect.
Can, can I add?
Go ahead.
But I've talked to Tim about this a number of times. Going from a construction background, you know, seeing these things and constantly looking like at the sheriff's department. I've talked to the sheriff, I've talked to him and. It just seems like, you know, I and I know other people as well, we've been talking about it, but we're not, not giving interaction, we're not doing anything. Um, and I asked Tim yesterday, I said, well, how are we going to, you know, say we're going to look into this and get price? Well, who's, who's going to do that? Who's going to take the time and the energy to get these prices? It needs to be somebody that. Has, you know, some experience in construction, so they, they know what's, you know, what's going on to be able to, you know, meet the contractors. And that's my big thing is. We, we need to, we need to have a system in place, whether it be our, our maintenance guy first that's doing this. But we, we have to have timelines and we have to really start getting the stuff. Done. It's just, it's like talk and talk and talk, but we're not doing anything. And I want to see some stuff get done.
Agreed. Part of that issue or concern is, is the funding. I mean, obviously, so are you talking about the projects with ARPA funds?
No, I'm, I'm talking about the items that Tim just talked about, you know, the facade of the sheriff department, you know, sheriff department, the drain out in the parking lot. But, you know, the concrete, the gate at the, at the jail. And if we ever had a major issue at the jail. And you had to push the inmates outside, we don't even have a gate that's going to close. I mean, these are major, major items that should have been dealt with. Especially the gate well before this.
I don't even call that gate ever being brought to us. Did I miss it?
It's been mentioned off and on. It's, it's not anything anybody's brought up our polls a lot, but you know, people are going to look into it or, or whatever, but. It's one of those things that really should be addressed. I mean, when we know it's broken, we should address.
So all I'm saying is, just like anything, when we have a course of action, we need a quarterback. Who's going to be that person? Then he'd be accountable. You know, we're looking to get some estimates. Well, who's it going to be? We should have a timeline when these estimates come back. That's all I'm.
I agree. I think we have a policy in place. We do have a policy in place as far as estimates, as far as how many we have to get and.
Oh, yeah.
Potential on that. That's why we hire you.
I'm not talking about policy. I'm saying who's going to do this? Who's going to be the driver to get these estimates? That's, that's what I'm, what I'm saying.
Delegating it to like some of these to the maintenance supervisor, because that's, you know, I don't know what we have on hand, for instance, uh. Do we have parts to repair a gate? I don't know. We'll get, get to the bottom of all that.
I did ask, because you had brought up as well, um. The maintenance individuals, I, I don't know if it was his job description, job duties, you had asked for a list of those.
When we discussed that, I'd asked what his job duties.
Job duties.
Active projects that he's doing. And it kind of like Commissioner Scott asked for today is reports. You know, and, and another item that I brought up to Tim is, you know, I don't know exactly. What are, we have two full-time employees in our building department. I don't know exactly what they're doing. How, how, how busy are these guys? Talking with Brian Stein, because I've asked him to do some work for me at the transit. Brian states he's extremely busy. Well, good, that's great. But I mean, I think we should be able to know. What, what are these, what are these guys doing? How many reports? How many permits are being pulled per month? And I asked Tim yesterday, who is, who oversees these guys? And Tim stated to me, that's, that's his job. But I just feel that we need, just as we're going through, you guys have do it for years now, since, since Tim's come on board, is. We're trying to get all these job descriptions and figure out, well, everybody has to be accountable for their job and, and who's in charge of who. And, you know, I just think there's some things we got to get figured out and back to these reports. Two full-time employees in the building department, and I'm not saying that there's any problems at all going on. But I think we should see what they're doing. What is their activity? What are they doing every month? How many permits are being pulled? I would like to see what, what they're doing and, you know, again, some numbers.
Just a very fine line, because we. Go ahead, Tim.
Well, I know, I know you're going to talk about department reports here later on the agenda, but I, this, this is not a problem. I mean, it. They just need to know what you want to see and what format you want it. Uh, they operate on BSNA just like we do with the finances and so they can. Spin out reports really at upon request. It really shouldn't take very long. Um, that being said, you know, you, you, you hear the comment, well, we're busy. Yeah, everybody's busy, but remember, when you, you employ somebody, you are the priority. So if you need something done. You know, we'll make sure that the department is aware of that and it will be done. Uh, particularly the employees that you see oversee directly. Uh, there's no problems making this their priority for the day.
Yeah, well, the reason there's two in, in building is because you have to have certain certifications. In order to do building inspections. And those two people have the certifications that are needed. Both of them don't have the same certifications.
I know.
And, and, uh, well, so you know. Oh, Brenda, I'm just asking what they're, I just would like to know what they're doing.
Well, they can send you reports. There's so many building.
We did recently get a report, um, in the zoning, Brian, or Ryan, and we got a copy of it as well, as far as how many compared to last year to this year, and it wasn't that long ago. I, I agree with you, uh, Commissioner Worthy, as far as. It, it's just easily, people get very offensive. Um, when you start asking these questions and, and I think you're asking them for the right reasons. It's, 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 we're asking these questions a lot in, in the township meetings, you know. Um, so it's nice to have this information, a hundred percent.
Yeah, I'm not saying that there's any problem, but just like any job that I have, people expect. Me to give them information of what I'm doing and they want to see results. And that we need to do that same thing here. It's just, it's simple. We're not. Again, I'm not seeing any problems. I'm not pointing any fingers.
Asking questions.
Just asking that I think that we should get consistent, consistent. Again, consistent reports.
So there'll be more to come underneath department head reports. Correct, I, I'm.
Well, I haven't got there yet. I'm still.
I'm still working on those. Yeah, I kind of, yeah.
So we're looking at a meeting, uh, the twenty ninth, you said that's a extra Thursday. How do you guys feel about having a ARPA meeting? Time?
Could, could I comment on a couple of these things?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Get on to, uh, planning a meeting?
Go ahead, Commissioner Scott.
Uh, county building, you make a good point. Consumers power, yes, absolutely. We should have consumers. Whenever we're doing improvements, it's difficult because if you ask a contractor coming here, they're going to look at it. From the standpoint that they're going to get the job. And if they want to make a lot of money, they're going to look at it in a very expensive manner. So if we can get people, uh. Outside of. The construction end somehow. I think a good time right now is our heating system. I think we need a good assessment of our heating system. So I would say, can we, can we bring in somebody from the state? Mechanical division. To give us an unbiased. Report of our heating system.
Um, another thought, when you mentioned that, uh, the housing. Uh, program uses somebody who literally just, his job is to go out and do estimates on projects. So if they've got a roof replacement, he goes out, puts together an estimate. Then they issue their RFP based on what that estimate tells them. I'll talk to Leanne, find out who that is, and maybe that person is qualified to do that kind of thing too. Just to give us an idea, like you said, this is not somebody who's going to bid on the project. All he does is looks at what needs to be done, puts together an estimate.
And I think that, I think that's the first step. Consumers, it's not going to come in and do the work. Um, so I, I think to look at the electrical efficiencies, that's the, the, the. People we use. Like the heating plant, like I say, somebody, uh, uh, mechanical. Uh, state mechanic, there's a state division of mechanical inspectors out there. Let's reach out and see if we can get one. I think it's just an unbiased approach. We need unbiased approaches to all this. I mean, just like, uh, research. Who, who can come in and take a look at our windows and our doors and give us an idea? Because if I call the window and door guy. I, I, you know, they're, they're going to look at it as if it's a competitive way to do it. And, uh, uh, it's, it's tough to do that. I, it's tough to find out those prices. Correctional. Anything correctional, now funding source, can't we use commissary for that?
You can.
So we can scratch ARPA off of that. Because we have commissary funds. Okay, um. Sheriff's office, we can't use commissary on it, but I think we need to get a, a, a. A list of different things. We've had problems come to us in, in the. Past year from different departments. It hasn't been addressed, but when it doesn't come back, we just forget about it. Here just a few weeks ago, we were in dire straits of fixing the beds in the, in the jail. Now we're. I don't know if we're still in dire need. You know, I mean. It isn't brought it back up, so I guess it's not in dire need. That's my, my assumption. You know, when you're in dire need of something, I guess you, they cut, you constantly come to you, I gotta have it done. You know?
To head off some of that by adopting that capital improvements plan, and we've done that, reviewed it each year as part of the budget process. So I'll certainly remind departments that that tool is out there. If there are any projects that need to be added, we can put them in there and there are a number. Projects in there that we've, which actually done. It's kind of a handy tool.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it'd be good to.
I mean, we've had other departments, not just sheriff corrections. But we've had other departments, Ray's come and talked to us both things. And, and transit, and if you ever been over there, you can tell that there's some maintenance needs over there. I, 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 I don't know if everything should be done in-house. With who's going out to take a look at everything, because like, like it's been brought up, we're busy. You know, I've worked. A lot of jobs. I've never worked a job. I was a hundred percent tapped out. Never. There is always room for something more. I've never worked a job. It took a hundred percent of everything out of me. And I don't believe there's a job in the, in this county operations that takes a hundred percent. Out of everybody here. That's, that's saying that you don't have time to go to the bathroom. You tell me it's a hundred percent. Or you can go to the bathroom, but I, I don't have time to wash my hands. I don't have time to comb my hair, because I gotta get back to it, because I'm a hundred percent used up. No, no. Nobody's that far. And then. Yeah, I mean, any day, you can go by Dairy Queen and see somebody that works at the county. Standing in the front waiting for a milkshake. Where on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Lunchtime and.
I, I guess, is there a direction you're headed with this?
Well, I just, yeah, I, I think that, uh, I think that the more outside sources we use to assess the problems that we. Need and get this stuff done. A lot of this stuff is, is, is covered. We have the money to cover it. We get to department reports, that's. Some of the things, just like Charlie was talking about. Yeah. I think we should work on the energy efficient improvements in the county building. Exactly. That's, that's a, that's a priority that that's going to save us money. That'll save us money down the road.
Rich Castle through consumers.
Yeah.
He's amazing.
He's great.
Yes. Okay, is that it, Commissioner Scott? Item G, um, Commissioner Scott brought.
Want to schedule time for that meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm thrown off a little bit. Uh, the twenty ninth, which is the thirtieth day. Do you guys have a, uh, time on that you would like to? An AM meeting or a PM meeting? Pardon me?
I like AM meetings.
I can take the day off. I have lots of vacation time. Is that a Thursday?
Yes, I'm going to meet seven, eight, one. Morning.
Seven AM, I'll be here, Brenda.
Seven o'clock, alright. What time?
What time are you, are you, uh?
I can be here five in the morning. You just tell me the time.
Uh, how about we do, how about we do eight AM? You guys okay with that? Eight, eight thirty, nine? Throw something out there.
I have interviews with MSU Extension that day, but I don't. Well, I have a block schedule from eight AM to four, but I don't think they're going to probably be in the morning. I just kind of figured we were going to have a five thirty meeting.
That would be even better for me, but.
I mean.
What works for you, Commissioner Wiltsey?
Well, to be safe, because I do have a block schedule with MSU Extension for interviews, I would say five thirty. Well, to be safe, because I do have a block schedule with MSU extension for interviews, I would say five thirty.
Okay, Commissioner Scott, do you have a preference? AM or PM?
It could be either.
Do you have a preference AM or PM? Somebody give me a preference, cause I'm a PM.
I can do PM, that's not a deal.
Okay, let's do PM. Five thirty. Thank you, guys.
Five thirty PM.
Twenty ninth.
Can't change the time now. I don't have any more room in this little square.
Okay.
So are we gonna try to stick, maybe see if uh. Rick could be here and some.
It it indeed, this is related to a meeting just related to ARPA funds, so Tim should be have all that information for us by then. It shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, I do need uh send emails. I do need prioritized lists from some of you yet.
Me.
You got after me.
Carrie, go ahead.
Could I please mention in consideration of your ARPA funds to address the negative cash at that meeting?
That'll be, that's a part of our uh rating system that's on there, so, okay. Item G meetings, uh, Tim, you were not at the last meeting. Commissioner Scott asked us to to be brought up and and before. Um, I I'm gonna ask you as far as this is our rules and procedures as far as who we follow, what we follow. Um, and I'm asking you as well, um, cause I think some of the commissioners at at certain times, I I didn't ask this to be put on there, but I think it's a very good idea. Um, struggle with what my job is as far as a chairperson, as far as how to run these meetings. So you have a core.
Yeah, so you're like a. Not meaning it's in a derogatory way, but you're like a traffic cop. You're directing, you know, what's gonna happen and. And and how it goes through and you do it very well. I don't think anybody would argue about that. What I took from what I've gathered and I have not studied it greatly, but from what happened at the last meeting, it had to do with motions. Um, and just uh basic run through. You know, typically you don't discuss an item until a motion is made and seconded, and that's why we'll put the resolutions out there too. So you get an idea of what the subject matter is. Moved and seconded, that doesn't mean anyone has to vote yes on it. Whether you. Move for the resolution or you support, you are not committing to voting yes, you're committing to the discussion. That point. That's where the discussion will occur and you discuss things quite well. Uh, and then you vote on the resolution. Now, anyone at any point can say, I call the question and in your rules, when that happens, you take a vote. Uh, whether it's roll call or or voice vote, whatever, but when the question is called, you take the vote. Question was raised about rescinding a motion. Uh, anybody who makes a motion uh or seconds it can rescind that at any time. And then that's gonna end up being sort of the priority. If the motion's been rescinded, now you've got really nothing to discuss, right? Somebody else could reintroduce the motion and then you continue the conversation, but that's what happens. Now, we have a couple of situations.
When a motion's rescinded, I'm sorry, just because I'm asking, because you're right there. Now, when a motion's rescinded, that does not have to be supported. That's it's taken off the table. When once the person who either made the motion or supported it rescinds it. That that rescind does not have to be supported, or it does.
No, anybody who's. On the record, I make a motion to can say, I now rescind that motion. And then it's done, then you're nothing. I mean, there's literally nothing to discuss anymore. But like I said, that doesn't mean in the next breath, another commissioner can say, I make the motion to do whatever.
Good.
And then you're back open again. Um, there are um. Some statements in our uh rules of procedure that talk about, you know, when that's not appropriate. For instance, if somebody has moved the table of motion and that's been supported, that ends the discussion and that starts a clock. Uh, that motion either gets picked up at the next meeting or it ends up dying. And and that's it, but it can be taken off the table at the same meeting, but you do have a timeframe. By the next meeting, if it's not taken off the table, then it is no more. Now, that motion can be reintroduced later on, but it's no longer tabled. Think you do that quite well. You've had a couple of those.
Lately.
Yeah, so it's I I think we're pretty uh. Well versed on that. So um I I don't know if there were any specific other questions you had.
The question was asked as far as discussion. Um, and and the other question that has been asked recently as far as when a mo- when a resolution is either or passed or or not passed. It's done, it's over with. We don't talk about why we.
Here pretty soon, but. I think this this is the time that the five commissioners need to be talking amongst each other about it. We have to do it publicly. You can't do it privately. We're in such a better format than let's than. Getting when you first started, because back then, and Brendan knows what I'm talking about, we were in that other room. And it was a free for all. But it wasn't a free for all just at. Our table, there's a free fall from the other table. There's a term for that. What was that? Uh, anyway, um, yeah, I mean, that was. Free for all. We couldn't get any business done because we're being interrupted by the public or the department heads all the time. And it was very difficult to get anything done.
And and drawing your attention to two items that are always on your regular meeting agenda as well. So you've got to meet the whole and yes, you may have your conversations and discussions here, but there are two opportunities on the regular agenda. Usually number eleven, it's matters from the floor where allows you as commissioners to bring any matter forward that you want to bring forward and discuss. And then the second item uh is number twelve are motions for adoption. So if you have a motion you want to make, um. You're free to do that.
I've used that.
Yeah.
I have used that in the past.
I I think another thing and and I did. Before I I I joined, and I'm gonna say this, um, before I I joined as far as a a commissioner, um, I came to a couple of meetings and. The the meetings were or uh I'm gonna be honest, extremely unprofessional, extremely. Seem very efficient. So I I think I think the commission is is came a long ways. Um, I think with us trying to follow these these rules and in. Of procedure, but I also think I I tried very hard and please correct me if I'm wrong, to give each person adequate time to ask questions, to speak, but to speak when. When it's their turn to speak, so we don't have two people speaking at the same time and we have people listening now and making sure that everybody can hear the comments. If there's something that I'm doing, I guess that you you would like to see changed, please, please address it, but I I also would prefer it to be addressed professional and courteous. I I'm open to some suggestions. I I speak to Tim periodically and and ask him as well. Um, but I I do think we're we're our department heads and individuals are here. We're trying to utilize the best of their time and and trying to be productive with our. Our time and our time. Um, and trying to run these very professional and what what rules, because it was brought up that we make our own rules at the last meeting, what rules of procedure do we follow?
You follow the. Rules of procedure you adopted.
Which are, but but we follow the guidelines. What what am I trying to think of here?
I think you're thinking of Robert's rules. That's a fallback. That's not.
Correct, but we have our, we do have our set of rules that we follow.
Right.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
A lot of times it's once around the table. And if you're the first one. Four other things can come up. Thing that may alter your initial opinion or the information you know. And so sometimes I think some some things just take a little bit more. Little more time.
So making sure before I go on to the subject matter that I I I go around the table again to make sure that there's no questions? Comments?
It could be that.
Okay.
It it may not be. Some things are pretty cut and dried. And then stay on task. We gotta stay on task. I you you try very hard. But just like this, we were on ARPA. Next thing you know, we're on reporting. Two 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 lines down. So we need.
So don't be offended. I'm gonna ask you and I'm gonna ask you specifically, please don't be offended when I when I try even harder to do that.
Don't worry, I'm getting used to you.
Perfect. Anything else on this? Hey, item H, department, department reports. Um, Commissioner Scott, you asked for this to be put on?
Oh, well, we've touched on it quite a bit. Um. Uh, and and it it's it's everybody. We need to know. We get, we get constantly people asking us. Questions from all over the county, because we're the point person. You know, sure, every lot of departments are in contact with with the public. I mean. Under Sheriff, for shit was here, talked about the public. When the public talks to them, they talk about their department. When they talk to us, they talk about every department. And and we can have five people talking to us, well, five different departments at the same time. And and it's. We all, we all know it would be great to give them answers that. That means something rather than, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. I don't BSNA, you you said BSNA, it makes it easy. Maybe our people need a little training on how to use BSA to produce. Produce things for us, but like the Charlie talks about the building department, yeah, I didn't. You know, when somebody comes to me and says, how many building permits do you guys do a year? I don't know. I don't even have a clue. You know. I don't think it would be a bad idea that a report gets sent to Kelly. Each month from each department. In highlighting the the things, if it's building permits. Uh, that's that's easy. You know, um. In order to, in order to make good decisions, we gotta know. Good information. Good information. And not just trivia stuff, but good information.
So I need you to define for the departments what good information is. In other words, what do you want to see? Now, that doesn't mean that's it. You can only ever see these things. You're gonna see. Uh, building permits. Oh, well, how many were electrical improvements? Okay, well, we'll add that. But in the defense of the department, they're gonna need to know what you want to see and then they can produce it pretty regularly. Uh, and you mentioned again BSNA, I mean, it's a great tool. A lot of things, we can, a lot of ways we can make a report. But I I think back to my early days when I was doing maps uh up in Leelanon County, we were the first county to have a GIS. And the one caution of planning commissioners was. Don't produce maps for the sake of producing maps. I got to thinking about that. Yeah, I could produce a map that would cross-reference cardier accidents with soil type. So what? It doesn't make any difference. I mean, there's no correlation anyway. So we've got to be careful that we're not just producing things to produce things, but things that you want to see.
I.
Um, you know, car to your accidents that were injuries or or whatever, but something that you you're very.
Well, if it's revenues and costs, revenues and costs, that's our, that's our job. Budget, revenue and cost. If 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 there's, if there's departments bringing in revenue, we should be tracking that.
Yeah.
Uh, the building department brings in, look at that fee schedule.
You do see that monthly now. You do see the update on the revenues and where we are and compared to last year, where where do we stand?
Where?
You see that for me, in fact.
From general, from the budget, yes.
It's very specific. It's line item specific. That's what the departments can produce too. Uh, so that would be redundant, but if there's one that you want to see called. That would be redundant, but if there's one that you want to see called out and we can highlight that for you so that it's shown.
Right.
You know, called out specifically.
Why don't? We get, just like I'm doing with the ARPA prioritized, why don't we get a list of departments to each commissioner? And commissioners get an option to put down the kind of information you'd like to hear from. Those different departments. If there's something you don't want to hear from a department, fine, don't write anything down. Don't submit it. But if, if. Give every commissioner the same chance to get whatever information they'd like to get. For everybody. I mean. If. If Charlie, Charlie wants to know what's coming from. One department and I don't care, I still get the information. I, I don't think that's out of the, out of the realm. When I worked for Waste Management. The calls I would get was what's your, what's your average stops per hour? What's your, for residential, what's your average? Average. Times for. Per hour on your commercial and, and miles on your roll off. I mean. And what was your transfer station putting out? And, and you got to know these numbers. You had to know them right that day. I might be able to say I'm driving, I'll get back to my office and call you, but you need to know those. Those are costs. You know, if you're not picking up the, if you're not picking up the yardage, then it's cost or hours per hour. That's cost. And then, and then the other side, if you're doing it, you're making money. You know? People just want to know, people are, they've already given us the money. They paid their taxes, they given us the money and now they expect the service to be provided. I think it's just, it's just like know if it's being provided or not.
Commissioner Wilson, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I mean, I'm, I pretty much stated what I'd like to see and I agree with Tim and I think Commissioner Scott brought a good point that all of us commissioners can. Say what we'd like to see for each department and. Both from there.
Commissioner Simmons?
I don't know.
Commissioner Mahu?
I think it's too many cutters. If we got problems with something, ask about it. If we don't have problems, why talk about it? That's just me.
So I think information, can, can you send out a survey to the commissioners? Do you understand what? More questions, Commissioner Simmons?
You want to pour it to me? We can just be put on our computers, emailed to us.
Yeah. Correct.
Yeah, so they don't have to physically be here. Waste their time.
No. Anything else?
Well, I tell you, question for Roger then. But does this apply to the departments then? If they don't feel like they have a problem, that they don't, they don't have to tell us?
If they come in here and ask for money, they got problems. If they're doing this stuff and they ain't bothering us, everything's going good, why do you want to bother them?
So they got some, they got. Somebody just standing in the corner, doesn't have to do anything all day. And. We don't have to know that.
That's your words. We don't have to know that.
I'm asking.
Hold on, he's answering the question.
You said union problems are not ours. That goes to the union. If they got somebody standing in the corner, that's a union problem, not ours.
We're paying that person. Or that's a cost.
I understand and you told. Mr. Simmons, that it is not our business. Personnel getting into that is not the commissioner's business.
If it costs the county money, it's our business.
So that is not what you said.
Yes, it is.
Okay, hold on. Okay, so what we're going to do with this is we're going to provide a list to the commissioners. And we will get feedback. As far as what we want to know. Okay? Thank you. Item, item, that's, that's enough, Commissioner Scott. Item, item, I school resource, school resource contracts. Where are we with the, where are we with that?
School resource contracts, they are valid for three years. They expire in our fiscal year 25.
Is that the information you wanted to know? Is there, is there an issue, a problem? Or is there something else you wanted to know?
Well, we're over budget. We're over budget on them and especially in West Branch Road City. On the labor side, so. We're not getting the full effect out of the. The count, the, the school paying for the whole year.
Well, and. You know, it's worthy of review. It's a judgment call. Are we getting the resources, the funding that we wanted? Recall when we talked about these contracts, we looked at the pay scale that we pay our officers. And picked a middle number. You know, we might have an officer who is fresh new on the job, making the low end. We may have a senior officer making the high end. Tried to pick something that was in the middle, went through the, the benefits, calculated what those would roughly be on average. So in other words, in some years, we may be making money, if you will, on that. Other years, we wouldn't. But we wanted to pick something that was somewhere in the middle and was palatable for both sides, saying this is okay. With the officer that you mentioned, that one school resource officer is on the high end. He's a senior officer. He's actually on the defined benefit. Side for the retirement. Which is higher cost, but that's why we got away from that. You know, the other expenses, I don't recall off the top of my head where they were, but I don't think anything is over budget yet, but it is one of those ones that's got a star next to it to keep an eye on. To make sure, you know, we do need to make an amendment that we will, but I don't think it's over budget yet.
You and I talked about that. I thought there was.
We're over budget on days.
Yeah, well, you know, that's, it's another discussion. And in terms of days, we talked also about. Compensatory time and how that's built and where it's billed and, and all that sort of thing. That's, that's a different conversation. That we do need to look into, you know, just exactly how are we doing it? Are we recording it where we want to see it, et cetera. But as far as the duties that are in the contract itself and the calculation that we made, that we agreed on in terms of the cost of the contract. All of that's still, as far as I know, we're, we're in compliance on both sides. And like I said, it's a three-year contract when we signed it. So we're committed through 25. Now there is, I'm very sure, I don't have it in front of me, but very sure. An out clause in there that if either side wanted to get out from under the contract, we would provide notice and we would cancel it. Don't know if that's where you wanted to go with this or not, but we, we did make the three-year commitment and I would suggest that we honor it and if we need to make adjustments in 25, that we do that.
Commissioner Simmons, did you have something?
Yes, how's that going with? We have a resource officer at extracurricular activities. I mean, is that included in the contractor's extra money we get for that or is that just part of the? Part of what we get?
Working off from memory, we believe are budgeted for a 40-hour work week. But we worked into the contract that the hours that are worked, the, the actual work hours that the person is on site. Are flexible. So if there is an extra activity, say football game on a Friday night, those hours can be adjusted. Instead of coming in from eight to five, maybe they come in from noon till eight or, or something like that to cover that game. But that would be between the sheriff and the school to make sure that scheduling happened and, and you know, pay was, was made accordingly. That's like any other hourly employee. When that employee does breach that 40-hour mark per year, we are obligated to pay for overtime, whether we budgeted for it or not, that employee earns it. But that comes down to the administrative side. So those who are budget administrators who are in charge of this. Make sure that those things are kept under control. You know, we've had those conversations a few times over the last year about overtime and how that's scheduled. That's where the responsibility lies. So is with that budget administrator. So in the end, the contract allows that flexibility. If we breach that, well, that's us, that's on us. So if somebody's working 45 hours a week and there's five hours of overtime, that's on us. That's not on the, on the school. Now, if the school is saying, but you have to be here. And we're going to require extra hours, that's a different story. Then we will talk to the school, we'll write us, write up an understanding about how that's going to be paid for and we'll both sign off on it.
Sheriff, do you have anything to add to this conversation? Commissioner Scott, did you have something else?
Maybe then we need to put it in. Have, invite the school to come see us and, and clearly define what their expectations are.
Has there been a concern?
I haven't.
I mean, are we not meeting their expectation?
Oh, no, I think we're meeting that, but I, I, I'm hearing that they want more out of it than our contract provides. Our contract, as he, as he explained, is 40 hours a week. And there's flex time. It's right in the contract, flex time. And that is. To take care of that extracurricular thing.
Commissioner Simmons, are you done?
What?
Commissioner Simmons?
I have a question as to sheriff. We're not paying overtime to that resource officer, are we? We should not be.
There was.
Is there still a problem with that?
The, the recess officer that we're speaking of is the one from Oma Heights. He's also a range instructor. He's an armor. So every time and anytime that we have to do range. Which is a requirement for MCOS, we have to do that twice a year. He's being paid overtime out of.
Well, then maybe you should get a different resource officer out there. So you don't have to be, we're trying to save money here. There's no sense of paying overtime. And if you know that ahead of time. If you know that ahead of time, then. I, if, if I were in charge, I'd adjust accordingly because I would not pay overtime.
We, we have, we have another sergeant that works on a, on a routine on a, on a 12-hour shift. He gets overtime also because the range has to, has to run on all day and we're, we're. Instructing our people on the road, we have to do corrections. So you are paying overtime for both of them individuals. To fulfill MCOS needs.
But that's only twice a year, you said, correct? What's the overtime? You have it in front of you. What's the overtime right now for the resource officer?
Don't have that in front of me right now. I'd have to look at that. Well, budget update I gave you, I don't, I don't have it on the iPad.
It, you have it?
No.
Go ahead.
I just have a comment. If we're going to do a resource officer. I think absolutely no overtime with that.
We did. We had a very lengthy discussion about that. Commissioner Scott, go ahead.
Comp time is accumulated. Comp time is not paid out as overtime. It is paid out as the equal, equal. It is paid out as overtime, but it is not recorded as overtime. Let me be factual about this accurately. They, if they work a day, an hour over their eight hours, they get to bank that. That's comp time. That's totally legal in the government. When it's paid out, it's paid out. In regular time, but at a rate of overtime. See what I'm saying?
No.
Okay. It, it's over eight hours, it goes in a comp bank and it's overtime. But when payroll pays, if, if they got five days of comp time, it's going to be paid out at. Five, seven and a half hours. Of regular time. So then when you look over at the column, it says overtime, no change. That's how it happens.
Tim, did you have something?
So you can accurately say. There's not overtime. We're not over budget on overtime.
Just to be absolutely clear, in case we have any of our friends from wage and hour division listening or looking at minutes. Overtime is earned at time and a half. End of story.
End of story.
Whether that goes into a comp bank or it gets paid out, it's earned at time and a half.
Exactly.
And one of the neat things about an overtime, time clock system is it catches that and it tells us it's in the system. So we don't have a mistake like that that ends up costing us in the end.
Tracy, did you have information you wanted to bring?
Well, I don't know if I'm hearing him right. It doesn't get paid out as overtime. It's not in the overtime.
That's right. That's what I said.
Okay, you, I thought you said it was getting paid as overtime.
It gets accumulated as overtime, but that's not getting paid out as overtime.
If it's over 40 hours, it accumulates in their bank as an hour and a half. They get, they getting credit for the time and a half. But it's in the hours, not in the money.
Okay, how many hours are, are there for overtime for the resource officer for Oma?
I don't watch the overtime and I don't watch the comp. I only get the balance. I don't.
Access.
That's up to supervisors to approve the, any over.
It's both.
Over to comp. That's up to them. All I see is the, the balance.
Okay.
And they're only allowed to accumulate, I believe, 40 hours.
It's 48.
48, something like that.
I think it's once a year or maybe it's once, well, certainly by once a year, it's wiped out. It's, it's.
Right.
That, so.
Right.
We're not accruing hundreds and hundreds of hours of this. We've got a cap.
Do you want to put this on the next committee of the whole for more information? Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, but I think, no, what, what I'd like to do is invite the schools here. To hear their expectation of. Of the hours they want our officers at their schools.
I, I hear you, but I think before we take that approach, we have to make sure that there's a, a problem because that's their time. Before we take that approach, I, I think we need to make sure that we understand and we're clear and, and. Verify that we feel like there is a problem. If everything's going smoothly, why make a problem out of something that's not?
I don't think it's going smoothly.
I, I guess the sheriff should, should know that if things are not going well.
Things are going great.
Boy, these things are going great. Yeah, I've already thought there are a few things are going great.
So then we need to, your, your question is related to the overtime. So I, I personally would like more information.
There is no overtime.
Before, before we bring this to the school, I would like more information on it. I think we all need to get, to get all the same information. Do you guys agree with that? Yes. Commissioner Mahu?
The, he's getting the overtime when he goes up here, not at the school.
Yes.
At school, everything's.
Yeah, Commissioner Mahu is speaking. Go ahead.
When he goes to the range is when he gets the overtime, when it's demanded that he spades there.
And then he's also an armor too. He, he's, him and Justin will. Tear the guns down and, and go get into the, the, the fine workings of the gun. So that takes time to do it. We're not going to take guns to the school to clean. We're going to do it in our office. So we're around the children. So that, that is, creates some overtime and it's not a lot of overtime, but it's something that needs to be done.
Right, and I understand that, but I just want to make sure that, that it's nothing to do with the school. It's to do with.
To do with our road.
Yes.
And, and. And both, both of our range instructors get the equal amount of time because they both have to be at that range. And then they have to tear the, the weapons down, the long rifles has to be tore down and cleaned. And not everybody can do that because you have to go to school to do that.
Right.
Because you know.
Specialized training.
Putting together, right?
You had to go to school for that.
Okay. So we'll put this on the next committee of the hall for more information. Next, we have the opioid committee. Kelly, did you have any update? You provided one.
Same as last time. I think there's 12, 13. I tried to pull it up, but I didn't. Members.
What was the deadline on that?
May 30, I'll get back. And then two people. From Woodmore and then. West Grand Fork City School, so we have to make it with them. So we have people from. And Michigan. Both schools. And in mass.
I know a lady from Mossland Valley that applied also.
So you get 12, 12 out of all of those, you get 12 to 13 then. So thoughts as far as a, a committee on that? That's a pretty large committee.
Well.
Commissioner Scott?
We said we wanted a larger.
We, we did. Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, you, you, you guys want a larger committee? We set a deadline. We're past the deadline. Put the committee go, get it, get it working.
Let's do it.
Commissioner Wilson?
I'd like to be on it.
I would as well in the healthcare. You know, Commissioner Mahu? Mr. Simmons? Are you, you okay? So we will move forward with, with the committee, the members that we have.
We'll put this on the next cow. We can give you a list of who's there and.
Perfect.
One, one other thing on that. Judgment, we, we figure out. What can be used at, at the county. And because there's certain things we can't use it for, but there are certain things and carve out, let's carve out now. A, a portion that we can use here at the county. And put it in our bank. And then allow the committee to go ahead with all the rest. There's a lot.
At the conference last week, we had a session that's focused on opioids. Michigan Association of Counties has hired somebody to assist counties with that very process. I was actually pretty impressed. There are some planning components that went. Um, I was actually pretty impressed. Um, there are some planning components that went into this. Um, they've got a very good outline, a person with, um. Uh, some strong expertise in the area, uh, not only of, uh, the opioid concerns itself, but also that appendix E. That lifts what we can and can't do with the funds. Um, what she will do, at and our request, is come up and guide our committee in terms of putting together that plan. And going over very specifics, what it can and cannot be used for, uh, to make sure all the. You know, appropriate bases are touched there. Uh, but I would strongly suggest that we do that, and I think I've said more than once, my expertise in opioids is very low. Almost about where it is with the mechanical stuff, right? So, um, this is a resource that we're already paying for with your Mac dues. Uh, and they were very open about volunteering to come. Whatever county wants us, we're we're there. We'll, we'll be there to help. So I I'm intending right now to give them a call and say, okay, we're ready to establish our committee. Get ready, we're gonna call you.
Perfect.
Great.
Uh, item six, public comment. Is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Did you have something, undersheriff?
I did.
You're scaring me.
I'm scared.
You're making me nervous, what you're coming at me.
I want to take the opportunity while we're on the phone real quick. I received a message from Mayor West Branch. There is a scam currently today. Uh, went out about an hour ago. I am not soliciting gift cards. Uh, so if you receive an email or if you pass that along, your. Your businesses or anybody you have contact with, there's this generic email. Yahoo account that's labeled the mayor of West Branch.
Who's the mayor of West Branch?
So I just wanted to pass that along. I got notified about an hour ago, so if you. If you receive an email, check the email that says yahoo dot com. It's a generic scam that's going on. I'm not soliciting gift cards for any.
Would be nice, sir.
Well.
Any other. Any other public comment on the phone? We appreciate the participation. What if you were there today? Uh, motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Supported, motion, meeting adjourned. Have a good day, guys.
Everybody have a good day.
One of my colleagues talking about this commissioners makes motions and nobody will ever second.